Anything on the agenda?
I, I know, you know, I know how you guys play this game. It's not my first rodeo, okay? That's why I'm getting, I can't even go to the senior center now without, when I go on, anyway, we're not going there. But, last meeting, I made a statement to all of you and it was broadcast. And afterward, my phone blew up, my email, everything blew up with me because they're commenting as this meeting's going on and they want to hear more of what I have to say. You three-mitted me, I did the best I could. I put enough information out that everybody in the world wants to know what Trudy knows. Well, Trudy has been quietly trying to go in the background before she has made her move. I made it very clear that then my next step is a meeting in a couple of weeks. And then I'm going to Buick County. And I mentioned a plan that you all were, a lot of you were involved and some were not. The only person who took me on was this young man sitting over here and you, and he knew, he gave you the wrong information. So let me start over because I have the correct information. You all with Feather River Park and Rec and Buick County got Prop eighty-four funds to create the Buick County Orville, well, actually, it's the Orville Area Urban Greening Plan. Okay? You brought together all these people. You charged and got a grant for three hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. It was a plan that forecasted out. The money was given, it was spent on the survey and bringing everybody together, three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So each of these agencies put in this plan, it's beautiful, it's a zillion pages, I've read it. I encourage everyone else to read it because everything that you're addressing, you people in two thousand and fifteen met with the public. You met with the county, you met with Parks and Rec. You had, it went to your master, the city's master plan. So all these people coming together for three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and here we are talking about the same thing that you guys recommended, recommended, and was passed and you got your money to, to prepare this. So my question to you and my question to Park and Rec and my question that's gonna go to the supervisors is, did you mean any of that BS that you put in there? Is that truly what you came together to do? Because if you, if you truly did and you believe in what you spent your money on and what you all agreed to as three agencies and now it's coming back up and you're spending zillions of dollars more to re-investigate the same thing. Now, the county's on top of their stuff right now, okay? Feather River Park and Rec are having some issues. You guys are really having issues. But my question to you is, that plan covers Park and Rec, it covers homeless, it covers employment, it covers code enforcement. It's your three agencies' idea and agreement back in two thousand and fifteen. Well, the first zero to five years, you guys indicated that this portion of this plan was gonna be paid from your benefit assessment group that has millions as we know. Okay? The county has their portion, so everybody's now responsible to get the funding for their portion of what they committed to do in this plan. You guys, for some reason, seem to think that you don't need to follow the same plan that you approved and got comments on and you're starting all over again, is it gonna cost us another three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars? I hope not. I've looked at your budget, I've looked at, not the budget you give the public, I've looked at your budget. I know how to read it, I know when money's being hid, I know when it's being shuffled and I know when it's not telling the truth. And I tried the quiet back rouse and I am here now because I'm mad. Two things happened that put me over the edge. Number one, the reporting. And number two, I now, as the senior center at thirteen thirty-five Myers, am renewing my insurance. And guess what I have to declare whether I want or not? And that is terrorist insurance. Terrorist insurance. Because everybody that crossed out all that stuff on the DWR report, that's blacked out. They're using the reason being, we, we can't divulge this information because it's, we, we could give information to the terrorists. Okay, great. You know, you buy, if you guys buy into that, more power to you. However, I now have to, as a senior center nonprofit, get terrorist insurance. Sorry.
Thank you, Trudy. Annie Terry?
Hi, I'm Annie Terry, for anybody that doesn't know me. I'm the women's director at the Orville Rescue Mission. I just wanted to thank the council for their cosponsorship of the community Christmas dinner that was held on Christmas Eve at the municipal auditorium. We served just shy of nine hundred and twenty meals and gave out over six hundred Christmas gifts to children and adults in the community.
Nine hundred and forty-four Christmas meals.
Nine hundred and forty-four?
Yes, I just wanted to, you know, make sure you got that right.
Okay. Anyway, thank you very much for your cosponsorship of that event. Also, I just had a quick question about the item five or six, whatever it was regarding the vice mayor. And I just want some clarification either from the council or from the attorney. So, on a yearly basis now, since this was for one year, next January, we will get, again, have a vote of the council regarding the vice mayor's position? I just want some clarification so I understand.
So, can I answer, can I answer why I said a year? Uh, you can, she, I think her question was a little bit more broad than that, but go ahead.
I just wanted you to, we have an election coming and in that election, uh, Janet is running for mayor and so she can't serve as vice mayor and mayor at the same time.
Okay.
So that's why I said one year. Some of us in the council are...
Oh, okay. So, so that doesn't set a precedent whereby from then on, we vote for, or the council votes for vice mayor on either the basis?
It's, it's an appointment. Vice mayor is an appointment.
An appoint, okay.
So, and because it goes on, it, why would I want to appoint somebody indefinitely if this seat's going to change or the council's going to change? It really is. In the years that I stood on council, I ended up appointing Phil Wilcox the first year for one year. After that, it was one year, after that, I went two years. Prior to that, I think Steve Dernigan put Jamie Johansson in for two years at a time or one year. He was one year in an interim. But it just depends, it's also at, because the charter is poorly written, that it's, it's at the pleasure of the council that they serve. So if somebody chose to have the pleasure of a different vice mayor and they got voted in, that's how that would turn out.
Okay.
So, it, but in this instance, there was no timeframe set. And so, it at least put a timeframe on it. As the city attorney, you know, said today and I even spoke to District Attorney Ramsey about this when it comes to committee appointments or appointments in general. An indefinite appointment is not really what's best for the, I mean, that's just not something that you see. So, when I said it needed to be on the agenda, to have the agenda worded though, that at the request of the mayor, I don't think in the history of the hundred years has something like that ever been put on there at the request of the mayor. City appointments are usually under committee appointments. You don't see it necessarily pointed out at the request of two council members or the request of Mr. Huber or the request of Mr. Rust. It really is just about doing city business and trying to do the best that we can. And it's evident that we don't have good protocol in place and it's evident at times like this.
Okay.
And so, as a council, hopefully, because I've asked for, um, the goal-setting sessions to be put back on, that we can come together as, as council members and put our differences aside and, um, start setting goals that, you know, if it's in the top ten. I remember a few years ago when, you know, Jack's number one was public safety and Sherry's number three was public safety. I'm just, it was probably your number one too, but, you know, number three or number five, but at least it was in the top ten so we had a direction to send staff in.
I just wanna say, to commend you all. Being in the positions that you're in, you all have a bullseye that's painted on your clothes as you're sitting here. And so, that's a difficult situation to be in and I want to commend you all for doing it with grace and tact.
Thank you, thank you, Annie. Pastor Goodson?
Greetings to the ci- city council and everyone here. I bring something to you tonight that can help bring you all together. Amen? Like to invite the city council on behalf of the Dr. Martin Luther King Community Steering Committee to our community celebration event, celebrating Dr. King. It is also a scholarship event where this year, we will be awarding thirteen recipients. Each recipient receiving five hundred dollars. These are local high school students that will be attending a college of their choice. The event, the breakfast starts from eight to ten AM. The program is from ten to twelve PM approximately and we will be honored to see each and every one of you there. Thank you.
I'm sorry, yeah, what was the date?
The date is Monday, January fifteenth. Monday, January fifteenth.
Dr. Martin Luther King holiday.
Thank you.
And if the council comes, you'll be our guests.
Yes. Aside from that, the tickets are five dollars each.
Which we have to pay for.
As the council, yes.
All right. Moving on to an, um, next speaker on non-agenda item would be Brian Brown.
I planned this the same way, I figured three minutes and three minutes is six minutes, right? First of all, I'd like to say, um, as some have already said and you guys are aware when you put that hand up and said that I'd like to be part of the Orville council, that, um, you are targets and you will be grilled and that's part of the job. So I'm gonna grill you. Um, I'm glad you brought up goal-setting because I think that's something that's, we're lacking. We really, and especially during these times. If you look around at our city, it's falling apart. And one thing I'd like to ask is, uh, is how did we arrive here? That's an important question to be asked. Because if you don't know how you arrived at the situation that you're in, you don't know how to keep yourself from being in that situation again and failing. And what is the current plan? And that's where you go back to your goal-setting, you know? What is the plan? Is there a plan? Can the council elaborate on what that plan is with the community? Because I think everybody in this community would like to know, looking around at our city, is what is the plan? To me, uh, I don't think many people know right now what we're gonna do. You know, what our financial situation is and how we're gonna solve that. And, um, and, and you've heard it before and it, it, it comes across sometimes during the council meetings that the, the council needs to put aside their personal beliefs and their personal agendas and to make clear choices for Orville. That's what's most important right now is this town. This town is standing at the doorstep of bankruptcy. And if we don't do something about it, we're gonna look back and go, man, I wish we'd have done this or I wish we'd have done that. You get one chance at this, you get one chance and you can't fail. So failure is not an option. There's no second chances here. The streets are falling apart, the parks are embarrassing. The police response time has created a safety hazard in this town. You look at the response times of what's going on, you're gonna see in the next six months and I hope it doesn't happen. There's gonna be, something severe is gonna happen in this town. Because our, our police officers are overworked, they can't, they can't make all the calls. There's not enough men to do it. And, and the community is gonna suffer from that. I've experienced this myself and I seen it in some situations on my own property and I thought, if this person was to come into my house right now, it's all about me and him. Because, uh, the police are coming, but it's gonna be fifteen, twenty minutes. Lot happens in fifteen minutes, ask Jack Barry. The council does not seem to be moving collectively, in my opinion, in a positive direction. Even though you're a council, you have to operate as a group. It has to be obvious to the people that are looking at you and expect results, that you're working as a team for the better good of the town. So this city that I love is becoming a city I don't recognize. I go to the parks, can't walk across the park, kid, there's no kids playing at the parks. Why do you think that is? Look at the parks. Our community, the parks are the face of our community and our kids and our families can't even use them. Why is that? Because there's no enforcement. Why is there no enforcement? Because we don't have the money to pay for it. So what's the answers? These are all questions that need to be answered and it goes back to the goal-setting. I think that's the most important thing we can do right now is have goals. You know, in a business, when your business is failing, you sit down and figure out why. And you make adjustments and you look and see if it's working or not. And, and that's basic business and that's what this is. First and foremost, the council has to work together as a unit to solve very complex issues. We do not have time for personal conflicts. The clock is ticking and changes need to happen. Our city can no longer continue to go down this path. Let's have a plan and let's communicate to the community what that plan will be. And, and then again, I'd like to say, I understand your job and I understand how hard it is, what you signed up for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So if you recall, at the last city council meeting, I asked for the goal-setting to be put on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, will you please make sure that it's on next agenda? So we can set some goals, um, set some dates for the goal-setting workshops. Jack Kylie?
And Mayor, Council, good to see you again. I, I got two items I'm gonna talk to. The first one I'm gonna talk to is on the access to the dam. And, uh, I've got a letter there that I distributed to you, it was sent to Grant Davis, who's the new director of DWR. Tried to be nice and tell him that he had a job to do, that we weren't about to give up our access to be able to drive, walk across that dam and use the main spillway. To me, that is a given, it's non-negotiable, we've had it for fifty years and we should do that. What I'd ask the council to do is maybe either a strong letter or a strong resolution stating that our, that this is something that we're not willing to negotiate. They're gonna spend a billion dollars fixing the dam and stuff, they can certainly make it secure enough so we can walk across that. Because this is our number one tourist attraction, to have that and have that access. And we're sacrificing two years here, we're not being able to use it and even you having to drive a couple of miles there. So that's the first one, is to take a look at that, take some action. Because if we don't take action now, a year is gonna be up here and then it's gonna be late and then we'll be put off on it. So, I hope you get an agenda item on that. The second item I'm gonna talk about is the waters, Greater Orville Area Water Study. It's been a long time, you remember about, it's been a year or so ago. We were here, we had a lot of discussions with Cal Water and that stating we didn't need to do the study. We had the money, we went ahead with it and it's taken a long time, but the study's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. Don did a great job at bringing this to fruition, it was one awry there, two or three times and that's happened. And there's some good things that have happened. I see Cal Water's entered an agreement with the county now to take their water directly out of the canal behind their plant. Very similar to what Thermolito does. So now we're comparing water to water. And the only big comparison difference there is Thermolito is charged a seventy-four cents for a hundred cubic feet and, uh, Cal Water is three dollars and twenty-seven cents. So why do we need to study that as part of it? There's ten thousand customers approximately that are served by Thermolito and South Feather and they collect from those ten thousand customers about four point two million dollars. And those customers use more water per customer than the Cal Water customers do. And Cal Water from these thirty-six hundred customers are collecting right at five million. So that's the difference, that's why the study is being done, is there ways we can bring about improvements in that and doing it. And with this Mysine Canal, the one that the Cal Water is, is getting abandoned, was a long one that run from Wick's Corner. It's actually called it, the canal is sort of a stretch, it's more of a ditch. And the water was warm, it required additional treatment and stuff. So hopefully, Georgia, Cal Water will have a substantial reduction in their water rates and how that they're getting the water out of the lake, comparing it the same way Thermolito does. So with that, I'm glad to see the study proceeding, it's supposed to be happening in thirty to sixty days. Thank you. And I think your, your support on this has been, it was a seven to oh vote when we passed this with all the discussion on it and it's taken the time and we've, your support's been continuous there. And we'll get the study done and at least we'll be dealing with some facts that are common and we should all understand. So thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Phil Spear?
Good evening. Good to see the city of Orville out and participating. And, um, for such a big city, um, we, most of the time, there's hardly any people here. Just takes a couple Facebook posts to get everybody riled and, and showing up, but, um, it does take the city getting involved and participating and we're all important. And, um, everybody's voice is important. I, again, just came to pray. The Bible says if anyone is in trouble, they should pray. It's the, the answer in, in, in my faith. We are, we are in trouble. California just passed, uh, the cannabis and, you know, the law enforcement, you, they, they know what the battle is. Everybody knows what the battle is. I'm a, a, a tree contractor and, and I've been up in the hills around Orville and I see where they've cut, clear-cut, um, land where they just cut monster trees down just so they could get better light. They'll call and say, hey, how much is it gonna cost to, to chip this up? There's no way you're gonna clean up the mess, the, the destruction that they've done to our environment. There's no way you can put the cost on what recreational marijuana is gonna do to our city. It, you ain't gonna be able to fix this citywide, it's gonna have to be the people getting involved. One, one meeting at a time, one person at a time, one interaction at a time, one good work at a time, one prayer at a time. So I just came with a solution of prayer, to pray for one another, to care for one another. And the Bible, Jesus said, when you pray, pray like this. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For yours is the kingdom and yours is the power and yours is the glory forever. Amen. We have the solution. Being active, love. Love always protects, always hopes, always perseveres. Love never fails. I choose to believe. I believe in the power of love. I, I believe in the power of, of helping people, of caring, of reaching out to the least of these. I believe that the, the, the gold of Orville is its people. I believe in, in the hope that we have. It's not dire as it might look on paper. We have resources, we have community, we have upcoming events. Martin Luther King Day where the people of Orville can get involved and come and fellowship and break down the walls. Instead of being, uh, arguing over elections or being community, caring for our children, helping the, the senior center and the, and the YMCA. Go visiting at the jail. The juvenile hall's in Orville. We just need to wake up and see that it's for such a time as this. This, um, this problem is just an opportunity, just like the, that Facebook post or whatever it was. I must have missed it when I seen all the people, I was like, something's going on. But it's just an opportunity to show up, an opportunity to get involved, an opportunity to forgive, an opportunity to move forward, to getting people to get out of their comfort zone and come get involved. Saying, what can, what can I do to help? What can I do to contribute? If everybody would just give a little bit, we could make great changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Steve Terry?
Uh, good evening and happy new year. I just wanted to give a little bit more of an update and have some fun with my wife a little bit about it. I, I, I thank you for noticing the nine forty-four. But there was also about six hundred gifts giving out to kids. Santa Claus was there, we had a great time with it. We had, uh, another group, Riley's Red Cycle. Young lady, seventeen years old, started her own nonprofit and the whole opposite, the whole job of this nonprofit is to raise money and give bicycle ways, bicycles away to underprivileged kids. She gave away eleven bikes that day and did a great job. We were glad to have her there. We had a great time. Part of the nine forty-four, we took every public service. OPD, OFD, Newt County Sheriff, dispatch and patrol, four, both shifts, that was to both PDs. Cal Fire, Engine Six, Company sixty-three or Station sixty-three, as well as dispatch, Highway Patrol. We took all of them, a meal, right out of this dinner. Put it to go and furnished it because we considered it privileged to help our public service because they helped us an awful lot. But the one thing I really wanted to say too, I heard a comment that was made, uh, Mayor, which you had, when you had stated that your staff is overworked. I understand that. There's a whole bunch of people in this room, the community that are here. And I, for one, I'm not gonna volunteer everyone here. But I've made it known and I still make it known, I'll help any way I can. I have administrative skills, I have whatever, you need to volunteer, that's all I'm interested in. But I'm willing to jump into the public and help. God bless.
Thank you, Steve. God bless you. Stephanie?
Since we were talking about goal-setting, I will, for the third time in a row, talk about the opportunity that we have in embracing that, the fact that marijuana is now legal in our state and making sure that we capitalize on it. And I don't know that we have any other plans available to us that will offer this kind of reward. And so I'm asking for, for it to stay on your minds. I know that you, some of you have planned to go to Shasta and see their example and learn what, what worked best and what could be improved upon. But I would also like to remind you that, um, you know, there isn't a deadline, of course, um, now that we realize there isn't. But every day that we are not kinda jumping on this and, and grabbing the opportunity, we, we run the risk of somebody else snatching it and, you know, and not, and losing that position. That is a, it's a really great position that we have. The location, um, just really couldn't be better for us. And the, the number of jobs, the number of high-paying jobs, the number of, um, really unique kinds of jobs that can, that can be brought to Orville that will, you know, really truly have long-term effects. And I just want you all to remember that while you're goal-setting, please don't forget this and please let's, um, it's got no, there's nothing about, uh, right or wrong with this. It's not a moral issue anymore, it's just a business decision. it's got no, there's nothing about, uh, right or wrong with this. It's not a moral issue anymore. It's just a business decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. George Barber?
Thank you. George Barber, I'm the local manager for California Water Service here in Orville. And, uh, I'm not here to come debate, Jack. I'm just here to, uh, to remind you all that, uh, we are cooperating with the study. We're working with it. Um, but I also wanted to make sure I'm here to outreach to you folks. I got my business card if I can give it to each one of you. It's got my cell number on it. It's just about sitting down and, and, and hearing us out and me hearing what your concerns and issues are. We're working always to provide clean, safe, healthy drinking water twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. That's our, that's our job and that's our goal. And I'm here to hear from folks what we need to do to try and do the best job we can. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Does anybody ha- um, I, I could use one. Um, you just wanna pass him out? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you. Is anybody else was to speak? Non-agenda item? Anybody?
Madam Mayor, before you close, I do have one item. It's the letter in front of you regarding B CAG. Do you want us to write a letter in support of the train?
Uh, yes, I would. I mean, it's, um, I reported out about the, about the, ex- was the train and the bus, the commuter bus to Sacramento? Don?
Yes.
Is it the train and the Bu-
It's, I believe it's the train. It's the train from Sacramento or, um, from.
Well, I certainly would. I, I mean, we sit on B CAG. It's one of those. It's a, it's a train. It's called the, start?
I believe you, you called it San Joaquin. I'm not sure.
Yeah, San Joaquin. I'm sorry. I'm just like out of left field here. So, um, the San Joaquin, it starts in Bakersfield. A lot of people that, what's funny is I've had conversations about this and a lot of people have, um, said that they've taken it in the past. It goes to Sacramento, so it's a train, bus, train, bus. And so from Sacramento to here, it's a bus and they're moving the San Joaquin is expanding up to Marysville. They're wanting to actually, because of the Buick County Association of Governments looking for a commuter with the study that they've done for commuter bus from Chico slash Orville area to Sacramento, they came up with such a ridership that within five years or so, the San Joaquin wants to expand to Orville and open, um, the depot. So it would be, um, I think, a good letter to write as support. Does anybody else have any comments on that?
Well, I'm definitely in favor of that and.
Orlyne? Anybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Did you get your answer?
Yes.
Would you like to speak? Non-agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, then we're get- af- after you, we can be done. So go ahead.
Yeah, so I recently moved to Orville, bought a home. Specifically, I looked for property that was not in a Cal Water district. Um, and I would just, uh, not wanna be a homeowner where Cal Water provides that service. I'm very happy with South Feather Water. I just wanna make that point to the council that, uh, in considering the impact of, uh, Cal Water, um, that it-
I mentioned you were new here, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, in the, in the terms of property value, I think that's certainly a consideration as you look at the study with the folks, um, that you might wanna consider the broad s- uh, spectrum of impact, uh, that, uh, having two water districts in the same city have, especially when it comes to cost. So, uh,
There's three.
Three.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So anyway, but I'm, uh, I'm happy that I bought where I did and that I have a awesome water service with South Feather Water. Um, and I don't work for them. Thank you.
Welcome to Orville.
All right, anything else? Okay, we are going to convene to close session again. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Kenny. Kenny Malone.
Well, I didn't read all the Facebook pages because I was out of town having a Happy New Year, but, uh, we wish all the council a Happy New Year, the mayor and all of you. Uh, this is a non-agenda item and I sat back there and I listened to this and, and some of you are, uh, thinking about the dispensary here in town. I've got two boys in college. One went to Bible college and one is in Cal Poly right now. My oldest is twenty-four years old. My youngest is twenty-two. Um, I raised them in a home that believed that marijuana is damaging to the brain. I came out of the drug, uh, culture. I was hell on wheels and now I'm a pastor. Um, I have come to speak against this and I hope that the council will use a little bit of common sense when they look at something like this. I raised my kids. The last time I checked, when I took a hit of marijuana, pleasure or non-pleasure? And number two, I wasn't just a pastor first. I was a business owner and a drywall contractor in this city. And when I found somebody that was on marijuana, I fired them. When I found somebody that was on drugs, I fired them because they're non-productive at work. And so I would ask you that before you jeopardize our kids and our society and our little town here with marijuana and a dispensary and a, and a, uh, uh, all of the legalization, I don't care if it's legal or not, it's still wrong. And I will speak against it every time that this council meeting is open because marijuana is a drug that is a mind-altering drug that makes you non-effective and non-productive in the business. And I, as a businessman, forget the pastor thing, as a businessman, I would never hire anybody that did that because they're non-productive. And there are people here that have grandkids and kids that are raising their kids in this town. And I love this town. I love this city. I love what you guys are doing. I know you're got, guys are up against the wall. I know that you have fa- hard financial, uh, things that are looking at you in front of you and trying to figure out how to do this. But marijuana is not the answer. And I'm gonna stand up here and agree with, uh, another pastor here, Billy, that when we pray about things, we can fix things by prayer. And there's another solution to this. And I believe that God has a better solution. And I believe that we can all come up with a better solution because the last time I checked and when I got delivered from marijuana and alcohol and, uh, drugs, I did cocaine. I did it all. But I was delivered from that. And I was non-productive. I was, I was wasting my mind away and making people miserable. I was just lucky I didn't get caught by the police. I think it may have been the grace of God, but I'm standing here today to hope that you gentlemen and, and ladies and gentlemen here today would reconsider this because our kids deserve better. And I just wanna pray for you. Father, I just ask you, God, that you would give our council wisdom, give our city wisdom, give the people that are, uh, running the city wisdom. And Father, I pray, God, that you will help them to stand for, uh, the right and not cave into the wrong. I don't care if it's legal or not. I just ask you that you would help them to make the right decision. And God bless each and every one of them and their families. And may, uh, the Lord be exalted in this in Jesus' name. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Grayford, did you, your name is in the queue?
Oh, no, that was from before. Thank you.
All right. We are going to, um, reconvene to close session. If you guys can't stick around, um, it was so nice to see everybody this evening. Art, uh, ten minutes.
Oh, I'll stay.
Okay. I got a chicken thigh, chicken leg.
No, I want him to take me to dinner.
Oh, thank you.